If I can have everybody's attention, I would like to call the January 21st, 2016 meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. I'm glad all of you are here, welcome. And if we could all rise, we're gonna have an indication and pledge. If anyone could bow their heads. Heavenly Father, we bow before you today, so thankful for all that we've been blessed with. As we all face our own personal issues and problems, Lord be with us and provide the comfort that only you can. We thank you for all the wonderful opportunities we have before us. Help us to use all that we have in a way that is pleasing to you. Please be with us and guide us tonight as we make decisions that affect so many. We humbly pray for this and all your continued blessings. Amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have a force and agenda we have a motion to approve.
Samud.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor. Unanimous. First thing on the agenda is approval of board roles and responsibilities. We need to do the board chair, vice chair, legislative liaison, attendance protocol, drug awareness. Is there anything else? So, where do I wanna start?
I'll just make a motion for you to be chairman again next coming year.
Okay. A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy. All right, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll try my best to do a good job. Okay, we'll go ahead and do the vice chair.
Make a motion that Kristen Morris, you remain that seat too.
Okay, so we'll remain the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Unanimous. All right, the legislative liaison. Kristen has been that, she's got some things that she needs to follow up and finish, but if somebody else, is somebody else interested in that? No? Well...
I'm happy to do it again, but when it comes to the Opportunity School District, I'd be happy to have some help on that one end. I know that's your strength, so...
Okay, 'cause you've been, you've won some of that, being the district thing, so... All right. I have a motion for Kristen to be the legislative liaison.
Samud.
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor. Unanimous. All right, the attendance protocol committee. Who was that last year?
I'm currently on it. We've started back, they hadn't met the last few years, they just have got restarted again. And what this is, they create the policy and how the process works for attendance and how it works with all agencies together. It's a mandated committee we have to have, and it's not a hard thing to serve on, it's usually about two meetings, maybe three meetings a year. So, I've done it and I'm willing to do it again, unless somebody else would like to do it. Somebody?
I'm willing to.
Well, do it Nancy, okay. All right, we will get her name. Well, you make a motion for Nancy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Nancy, be the attendance protocol committee.
All right, a motion by Tom and a second by Kristen, all in favor. Unanimous. So, will you get her name to the right people, so they'll know to contact you, they'll send you an email about the meetings. And also this year, I thought we might ought to just make it official that we have the, you know, the Drug Awareness Council and all that's going on on that. And Tom has been there, but I think it would be good to make it official that he's representing us, and then maybe he can even come back and give us reports when they have summits and stuff, so...
Second.
All right, so I'm recommending Tom. And a second, all in favor. Unanimous. Okay, is there anything else that y'all can think of?
And you do the BYOT task force, or the equity, are you on that?
Yes, but I've just been on it for years. I don't think it's really an appointment, it's just something that...
Okay.
This committee.
And I'm on the Title I committee, and they're just different ones that I've done for a long time.
So you think this is all the ones that we need to make official?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You did the required ones.
Okay. Now that we've taken care of that, next we have recognitions. With Fonda Harrison?
The most exciting part of the night, and why most of you are here, for recognitions. First of all, we want to recognize an elementary school in Forsyth County, Whitlow Elementary. Don't come up yet, let me talk about all that you've done. Whitlow Elementary this year received their Advanced STEM Certification. And I wanna read a little bit about what that means, and then I wanna read what they actually said in part of their response at Whitlow. The Advanced STEM Certification is the first internationally recognized mark of quality for STEM schools and programs, signaling the growing emphasis placed on such education by teachers, politicians, and business leaders around the world. Advanced STEM Certification is the first internationally recognized...I'm sorry, that's repeated there on that, I apologize. Whitlow Elementary School received the Advanced STEM Certification, a mark of STEM distinction and excellence that is only offered to what are described as highly effective institutes that prioritize STEM education as a path to success. Whitlow is the 23rd in the United States and the first elementary school in the state of Georgia to receive this recognition. And this is what they said in the report about Whitlow Elementary. Opportunities for engaging with locally relevant real-world projects are prevalent at all grade levels at Whitlow Elementary. Whitlow's Think Globally-Act Locally initiative encapsulates the values inherent in the learning culture of this school. Each grade level engages in age-appropriate, community-minded inquiry activities throughout the year. This school-wide model is supplemented by daily lessons designed to scaffold STEM competencies through the use of practices and processes aligned to Forsyth County Schools' district learner profile. So congratulations, Whitlow Elementary. I don't know if it's just Dr. Lynn Castleberry that wants to come up, everybody wants to come up. Congratulations. Is it okay if the teachers come through too? Okay. Right. Okay, just walk through.
Will y'all at least stand up?
At least stand up. I know y'all are gonna be part of the presentation. They're actually gonna be our superior spotlight performance in just a few minutes, too, so maybe that's when we get those teachers up here. Next on the list of recognitions, this is actually the second year in a row, consecutive year, that Forsyth County Schools as a district has been named a Title I Reward District for large districts. And that's, we, as a Title I's, schools in Forsyth County, you know, are a little bit competitive, and so it's great that we can compete against what's considered large districts, which are primarily the metro districts, any district that's larger than 10,000 students. And we, of course, are in that category. So, we were named as the reward district for those top districts, again, for the second year in a row. What that means for us as a district, we get $50,000 that we can spend with our Title I schools, with professional learning, with resources and those kinds of things. But to help us get there, our schools have to perform very well. All of our schools in Forsyth County perform very well. And we've had three schools this year that have been named Title I Reward Schools. There's two different categories. Again, the second consecutive year, we've had two middle schools, our only two Title I middle schools, that have been named as the reward schools for highest performance. And what that means is that those schools, based on their CCRP I scores, have scored in the top 5% of Title I schools in the state of Georgia. That's really saying something. So I want to recognize both Otwell Middle School, if you'll come forward, Steve, and I don't know if you wanna bring Abby with you, or if you want that to be support. And just so everybody knows, criteria for a Title I school, congratulations, Steve. Title I schools are designated because they have a population of 35% or more of their student population that is being reduced. So our Title I schools doing a great job with educating our students in all ways. The next school that has received that is Little Mill Middle School. So Connie, if you, you got folks here, you too? Congratulations, Connie. And so, let me just have an opportunity to, for those of you that are staff members at these schools, that really is where the rubber meets the road and gets the job done, through the leadership of your principals, you guys stand up too, 'cause I know we've got some Little Mill folks here, and we've got some Otwell folks. And then, for the first time this year, the other type of reward school for Title I is a highest progress school. And that's a school that has shown progress of their students from year, over a several year period. And again, for the first time this year, we have one of those schools as a Title I school in Forsyth County. And what they actually look for, I said, for the highest performance is the top 5%, highest progress is the top 10% in making progress. And so we wanna recognize tonight Chesta T. Elementary and Poly Tennis for that. Congratulations. Good job. And if there are any Chesta T. staff members that are here? And our next recognition is, we have the recognition for the Georgia Biotechnology Teacher of the Year. And that teacher is chosen, it recognizes an excellence in STEM teaching and support for the biotechnology pathway part of the Georgia's career clusters. And it's selected by, it is a current high school biotechnology teacher. The award is nominated by peers and selected by the Georgia BioEd Institute Board of Advisors. And we are proud to say that we have Ms. Janet Standevan from Lambert High School that has received that award. So Janet, you can go. Congratulations. And if those that are here to support Janet, if you'll stand up, I think we've got Gary and Pam back there. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Bearden for the employee recognition.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our award recipients. Mr. Perkel, you're really ruining things tonight, I want you to know that. I need you to come up here. Mr. Perkel is our Deputy Superintendent of Schools, who I'm really embarrassed right now, which is okay. It is my honor to recognize our January Employee of the Month, and obviously you know who it is now. We received over 40 letters, over 40 letters of recommendation for Mr. Perkel in terms of being Employee of the Month. And I'm certainly not gonna take the time to read all of those, but I wanna share with you some of the qualities that were highlighted in the Employee of the Month recognition, and I agree with every one of them. Number one, he's intelligent and visionary. He is patient and empathetic, kind and supportive, positive and passionate, caring and calm, ethical and fair, listens and communicates effectively, trustworthy and loyal. And although he's a really nice guy, he can be a really tough guy too, which I like that about him. I have worked with a lot of administrators over the years, and I can tell you that I've never worked with anybody that's more reliable, more dedicated, or more professional. And I'm really proud to honor our Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Joey Perkel. And I think this is the first time in the history of public education that anyone who's had anything to do with redistricting has received a standing ovation. So that's a pretty remarkable feat right there. And I'd like to thank Jim and Nix for being here tonight and sponsoring. Joey will take me to lunch later this week. And I know everybody's standing, but in the back, we have some very special people. If you're recognizing and supporting Mr. Perkel, please stand, wave. Okay, now I get to introduce. Joey, did you wanna make a speech? Sure.
I'm in charge.
None of the rest of us are. Let me introduce our superior performance spotlight, Lynn Castleberry and the team at Whitlow Elementary.
He was shy. He didn't know even when it's...
He was standing, standing in the back.
I'm guessing what he comes saying.
Do you choose this mission?
Oh, wait a minute.
You should have went back before I introduced you.
We have to talk this way? Okay. Thank you for allowing us to share our STEM story. If you can't tell, we're a little excited about this, and I will tell you, we're one proud faculty, one proud staff, and I feel like a proud mama, 'cause this is just something, at the end of the day, when all this happened and they announced it, I stood there and I thought, "I can't believe this is really happening." It's kinda like winning Miss America, except it's even better because it's an international thing, so I guess it's Miss USA or some...
Miss Universe.
Universe, the one they messed up on. Our journey started about three years ago, it was probably a little bit before that. And as you can remember, and as you know in education, things were changing and changing rapidly. We had new state standards, we had more rigorous curriculum that we were expected to teach. We were introducing Ed's Learning, and, oh my goodness, what all, I mean, it seemed like things were just coming and coming and coming at the school. And we kept saying, "What, how can we frame this? How can we make sense of this? And how can we put this in a way that where our teachers understand, where we know what we're doing, and we know how to make this..." At bottom line, we wanna do the right thing for kids. And in all of that, then we got the new learner profile, and it was like, "Aha, this is the way we need to go." Our first adventure out is we went to the Georgia STEM Conference, and we were sitting there, my teachers were sitting there, with some administrators, some teachers, and they said, "We can do this, there's not really anything special about this. We can do this." Well, that was just our first thought. Well, we didn't know how much work and how much effort and how much. But we took that, and we kept making it and refining it until we put the Whitlow spin on it, and we are really proud of the results. We ventured and we visited STEM schools. There again, it was like, "How can we make this Whitlow and make this the Forsyth County way?" We had all the tools, we had all the structure, we had what we needed, we just needed the vision, and our teachers were so awesome, because we were asking them to do something, number one, that was new, how to do that and do everything else that we were asking them to do. They were willing to follow us into a way, in a way that we weren't really sure where we were going, but we knew where we wanted to be when we got there. They, it was just an incredible, incredible journey, and the journey has made all the difference. One thing we did find out about STEM is really, people will call and they'll say, "I wanna come see your STEM program." It's really not just a program. It's not, to me, it's not a program at all. It's a way of teaching, it's a philosophy, it's a change in what we do in schools. Our school has moved so far in the way that kids talk to each other, how the teachers talk to kids, how we do work, and how the kids work together. When I think about the learner profile, all of those skills our kids are learning to do at five and six, by the time they get into the workforce, they're going, people aren't gonna be calling back and saying, "These kids don't know how to answer a question," because they will. One of the things that we have found, I was talking about the conversation, is the depth of the conversations with kids. When you ask a child in our school a question, at one time you would've gotten the answer like, "Two plus two was four," and, you know, "That's the end of it." No more. You will find out the answer to your question, the supporting evidence behind it, probably more stuff than you've ever wanted to know, and then they'll probably ask you a question. And that's, that's just the way it is. Our kids have turned into problem solvers and creative thinkers. They also know that to fail is okay, because fail is the first attempt in learning. Our students work in groups. Now, when you go in a classroom, you may not always see kids doing the marshmallow challenge with toothpicks and all that, we're way beyond that. But the groups are so, they know how to support, they know how to listen, they know how to give an opinion. Most importantly, our classrooms make that learner profile, it's alive. The things that we've tried to do in the county, it's all there, and it's exciting, it's, gosh, incredible. And we know our kids are going to be ready for the global world, and they're going to be ready for real life later. We couldn't have made this journey without our friends at the county office. I will tell you, the Board of Education, when you guys voted on I-Square and the flexible staffing, that made this happen. And I know that you didn't see the outcome of that, I didn't either. But we were able to put things in place. When you said, "We trust our administrators know what's best in every school, what's best for them to do the right thing for kids," you did an incredible thing for us. We also, we were fortunate, we've had Kelly Price, we've had Brian Lack, we've had Lindsay in professional learning, I hate to even mention it, 'cause there's so many, we've had Fonda. It's just been an incredible amount of support, and what do you need? How can we help you? Those kinda things. I want to introduce you to, to some special, special people to us. I don't know if you know my leadership team, and I'm missing one, she had a sick friend and had to go visit, but Katie Carlson, she's been my assistant principal for, well, she was with me when we opened Whitlow. She's a great friend. Jennifer came to us last year and was just exactly what we needed for the school. And these two ladies, they are incredible, they've helped me create a vision for the school. They've been okay when we said, "Well, you're not really sure how this is gonna go, but we're gonna do it anyway, we're gonna try." And they, they are leaders in the school. I'm grateful for my teachers, and I want them to stand up one more time. I know they don't always listen, but please stand up and let us recognize you. They always say, "Oh, we're not doing anything really special. Come to our classrooms." Yes, they're doing things that are special. They have gotten so good at what they do, they don't realize how good it really is. They are superstars, and they're really and truly, I think Fonda said it a while ago, that's where, that's where things happen, that's where the difference in the kids is. The work has been hard, and I will tell you, we've had professional learning, professional learning, and more professional learning. And these teachers said, "We can do this, we can make this happen." They're always willing to try new strategies, they take ideas and make them into reality. And even to this day, like I said, they're superstars, they don't, they really don't realize how good they are, and they are. Our PTA, LSC, and parent community partners, they've been a great help. Also, it's just, like I said, all the support from the board and the county level, we certainly appreciate that. Getting our STEM certification, that was big, that was great, don't you think? That was one of my best days ever. But, at the end of the day, you know, being one of 26 elementary schools, it's like, wow. And then the Advanced STEM people were going to Saudi Arabia the next week, so we think we're one of an international, they are doing international certification as well. Being the first in Georgia, that was awesome. I think that's pretty incredible. But, you know, at the end of the day, the STEM certification, it's an affirmation that we're doing the right things for kids. And as incredible as the certificate is, and as incredible as everything else is, that's the best part of all, is that saying, "You've got it, you're doing it correctly." We are, we say we were tall and make a PowerPoint, but we're not gonna put you through that. What we're gonna do instead, we have a great little video that we've made that is about the kids, and the kids are doing the video. I just want you to see what they do. You'll love it. And it's a mission possible.
Now that we're STEM schools, we can use more STEM so that we do more math, more science, more technology, more engineering.
How's it going?
Good.
All right, have you tested yet? Nope? All right. Are you guys making some improvements?
Yeah, we are.
For Raffael, what'd you decide to improve and change? What are you changing, Raffael?
I'm adding.
You're doing what?
Putting these inside these.
All right, we'll see how that works. All right, boys, how's it going?
Very good.
I'm taking a lot of time to make some nice blades.
I'm making these, and they're kinda like Princess Gunnery's.
All right, awesome. All right, you guys making some improvements over here?
Yeah, a bunch.
A bunch of improvements, all right.
We're changing all of it.
All right, I can't wait to see it, test it out.
This is our old one, all these cards. I'm changing, I'm changing the cards.
The card's the other direction. Oh, you're changing the cards to the other direction. All right, that's good thinking. All right, guys, how are you, how's it going right here?
All right. This is, we're on our second blade right here.
All right, second blade. All right.
All these triangles are just to go out, like, on the side here.
Okay.
Gonna go out on the side, just for extra.
Okay.
Kinda trying to get out.
Okay.
They're trying to...
What do you think that's gonna help it do?
I think it'll help it go, like, farther, help the cup go up easier.
Okay, help it go up easier, all right, we'll see. Okay, girls, are you securing your blades?
Yes, yes.
We're trying to make sure they're right out there.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
I don't know where I can go.
Me neither.
I think if it's this, I think he's gonna bend it. Please don't bend it.
Oh my gosh, no, this is falling up!
What do you think STEM has made a difference in learning in the school?
Well, one example is, we get to do a lot more hands-on projects, and that's very fun, because a lot of times, we will just read textbooks and papers, but it's a lot more fun when we get to do hands-on things. An example of this was, in our World War I unit, we did a project where we make trenches so we could see what it was, see what it was like, when soldiers just went in those and stayed in there for weeks during World War I.
Everybody uses STEM every day.
We focus on doing the STEM process in every subject, instead of just doing it in science or math. instead of just doing it in science or math.
Step one, ask. What is the problem? How have others approached it? What are your constraints?
Step two, imagine. What are some solutions? Brainstorm ideas. Choose the best one. Step three, plan. Draw a diagram.
Make a list of all the materials that you don't need.
Step five, improve.
What, what works?
What doesn't?
What better works than this?
My name is Andre Jackson. And this is the frog pond that Elka made. And there, and, well, and green tree frogs live here because there are some tapeworms in here and they might be green tree frogs. Hi, guys. This is a frog habitat that we built. And frogs live here because there's shade. And frogs like shady areas.
Hi, good afternoon. Welcome to Whitlow Elementary. We are proud recipient of the Advanced Ed STEM certification. Our STEM journey began three years ago with teachers looking at what we needed to do to meet the learner profile and us looking, as a school, at how we can best fulfill the indicators of the learner profile and make sure that our kids are where they need to be when they graduate from our school system. One of the things we found is we needed to implement things that were rigorous. We needed to have children who could explain, who could defend, who can come up with creative problems, and who understood that failure or failing was a first attempt at learning. We were so excited when we started moving in the STEM direction. It took a lot of hard work. It took a lot of work on our teachers and with our parents and our PTA and our LSC and a lot of support from our district on how to move teachers and how to move our students in that direction. We were so proud when we got our STEM certification because that was a symbol that we were doing the right thing and doing the right things for kids. Like the movie Mission Impossible, our mission was to get the STEM certification and put all of these great things in place. We chose to accept our mission. Boys and girls, instead of it being Mission Impossible, we chose to have Mission Possible. And we know that Whitlow Elementary, all things are possible. Thank you.
Okay. Just briefly, we wanted to share with you, you have received a copy of our, the report from the Advanced Ed Committee. And we're most proud of the fact that we are a STEM school instead of a STEM program. Many, um, schools that receive STEM certification, they're receiving it on behalf of a select group at that school. And we're proud of the fact that we receive this on behalf of every student at our school. One of the things we pride ourselves on is the diversity at our school. We have many programs, many nationalities, many languages, many experiences. And STEM has been able to cross over all of those boundaries for all of our students. And I think you were able to see that in the video there. From our special needs students, our ESOL students, our gifted students, everybody is involved in the STEM process. And it's not just in a specific classroom or a specific extracurricular, but it's for all of our students all the time. And so we're really proud of that and wanted to share that with you. In the report, there are 11 standards that we are assessed on. And those standards fall in three really important categories. The learners, the educators, and the experiences. And it's no surprise that the learners category comprises the majority of those standards. And so that's where we focus our time and our energy is on our students and their experiences every day. So we're proud of it and we want to share that report with you and see what we're gonna do moving forward.
So moving forward, you heard our story today and it's not over. I mean, Whitlow, we're here to continue to tell our story and we wanted the kids to tell that story because it's theirs. And, um, but we also talked to our educators about sharing our story. It used to be that kids came home and they hung their, their artwork and their schoolwork up on the refrigerator. Well, those days are gone. And when family and commu, um, members would come to their house and visit, they'd go to the refrigerator. And now it's, you know, it's their Twitter page. It's their Facebook page. So we've been very active and will continue to be on telling our story through those means so that we can share it with others. Moving forward, one of our goals is to continue a plan to help our district with having more schools become STEM certified and creating a pipeline so that we can make that connection between the middle schools and the high schools. And so we begun working with the ones in our cluster as well and making those connections and working on that because we want to continue that STEM literacy and make sure, and come up with a plan for monitoring that. How are we gonna know at Whitlow that what we're doing is making an impact on them when they get out of school and they are in the real world and they're solving those problems? We have, you know, examples of what they're doing now, but we want to continue a way and find a way to come up with a plan to monitor that progress as well and make sure that it is making the, um, a bigger impact in the, in the long term. So because this is such a mark of distinction, like you heard, I mean, and we are just so honored and humbled and it's just amazing to work with these teachers every day and the students in our school. But because of that, we've been approached by a lot of schools already in the county and across the state, um, and coming to visit us. And so moving forward, we're, you know, we're gonna host a, a STEM tour for the county in the late spring after testing. And also we're setting some dates and we want to be proactive and kind of have certain dates so that when schools call us, we can say, "These are the dates where we're gonna give tours" so that, you know, um, we can do that properly because there needs to be debriefing and those kind of things. But we look forward to collaborating with the, the teachers in our district and across the state as we lead the way because this is just an evolving and it's, it's, the story's not over. So thank you for letting us share the story. Um, and we look forward to lots more.
Can I ask you, do you have to get certified after like five years? Five years, is that what it is?
To get to do it again.
Oh, my. It's just such a, it's just so much fun to go to Whitlow anyway, but to see what you're leading the way and have.
It's an incredible place. If, if you have a band, please come. We would love to have you.
It's great, bro.
Great job.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce? Mr. McAllister, you want to come up and introduce our staff and students from Kelly Mill?
Sure, absolutely. I will reiterate what Fonda has already said and what Leon just said. It is true that it is a teacher level where these things happen, but I'll also add, it's also at the student level. And I'm very proud to be a Kelly Mill Colt. Very proud of what our, uh, two, two of our Colts are gonna share with you this evening. And again, thank you for your time.
My name is Delaney DePaula and I am a fourth grader at Kelly Mill.
And I am Peyton Denzil and I am also a fourth grader at Kelly Mill. And, um, we were introduced to a contest called Scotty's Trees Rock. And it's where you have to create a video on why trees, why trees rock. And, um, you, um, people have to vote. And if you get enough votes, um, you can win $10,000 for your school plus $4,000 worth of, um, tree planting session. And, uh, just a few, like a month ago, um, we found out that we made it to the top 10. And so, um, I'm just gonna like start on how we got the idea. So we had heard about the contest and we were originally gonna make it like a news station. And it was gonna be like a game on, uh, we were gonna have like a fact battle. And so then we started thinking of like fighting and we wanted to make it like a boxing match. Um, so we started with our script and our facts. And we wanted to dig deep with our information. Um, we wanted to have information that not everybody would know so that they could be hooked into the video. Um, and we also wanted people to be inspired by our video. Um, for the video, we didn't just want people to look at it, at it because it was funny. We wanted to inspire them to actually listen to our video and actually, um, like plant trees, save the environment, help our community be a difference maker. And, um, we wanted them to, um, uh, do what she said and like. And, um, how this relates to the learner profile, uh, we had to seek a lot of knowledge with our deep fact, um, deep facts because like I said, we didn't want just any random facts. And also, we looked at the problem, which was trees are being cut down and the people aren't realizing how much trees do. And we created the video to inspire people to, um, know the solution, which is, you know, um, planting more trees. And that's why we would love the tree planting session. And we want, uh, the world to know that, um, Forsyth County is bringing awareness of environmental issues and that, uh, making a difference in the world. So for our video, if you please help us by registering in, um, at scottys, uh, scottystreetsrock.com. And all you have to do is you have to register one time and then you only have to put an email in and devote every day until February, you can't, until February 7th. Um, so we would like you to see our video.
Uh, yes.
So this is our slide. So we're gonna be passing these out. Um, first you have to register, vote daily, and then we'd like you to share this to all of your friends. And thank you for listening to our presentation.
Before the video starts, can you introduce us to your two adult helpers?
This is Mr. Burbrink, our counselor at Kelly Mill. And this is Ms. Sumner, one of our Horizons teachers.
Great. Thanks, girl.
They wanna stand like that so we. Did you know that the oldest tree in the world is 4,835 years old? It can give us 87,210 people oxygen in its lifetime. Take that! Did you know that trees can prevent erosion? Because the roots should get to the ground and hold the surface. Or did no one thought know that? But did you know that the way a tree grows through its seasons can be shown by the flow of rains in its trunk? They're used to determine the age of a tree as well. Well, water and nutrients travel up the tree trunk, through the branches, and into the leaves. Oh, yeah. Did you know that the top species of kings in the world include the coastal redwood, giant sequoia, and Australian almond ash? Take this. When trees produce oxygen, they reduce the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Oh, yeah. It's quite beautiful. We have to be taught now to leave our cutouts clear. Save the trees. It's a view.
And then at Kelly Mill, as a part of our character education program, we emphasize being difference makers and world changers. And for these girls. That's the thing with YouTube. All right. So as a part of our, um, character ed program, like I said, difference makers and world changers. And for these girls to take such a unique spin on that and really take it in a direction that a lot of kids wouldn't take and, you know, to emphasize the environmental awareness and sustainability in a very, um, unique and different way. I'm very proud of them. And this, uh, was the first video in this competition from Georgia to ever make the top 10. And so like I said, we're very, very proud of them. So if you could help us out by voting and, uh, give, you know, getting awareness out about this competition and what our students did, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Great job.
Hey, I want to tell you that one of your teachers shared it on Facebook. It's my friend and I've been voting every day for y'all. I got all my challenges.
I told him that's the way I start every morning. First thing I do is I vote for those two girls.
Good luck.
Great job.
Okay. Now we'll take a couple minutes recess. So if you, you're welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting, but if you would like to slip out, now would be the time. If I can have everyone's attention, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. And we'll proceed. First we have, or next we have the consent agenda. And I know everyone has looked over it and had any questions answered that they might have from the staff. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second. A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous? Public participation? There's no public participation tonight. So now we have the presentation and discussion items. First is the Academy's update with Rudy Hampton, Beth Po, Betty Po, Susan Atkins, and Susan Atkins. I was about to say Debbie Smith, but she's the next one.
To Susan Atkins.
Good evening and thank you for inviting us to be here tonight. We're glad to be here and talk to you about what we've done in the last 18 months as we have assembled these responsibilities at Forsyth Academy and I achieve. We want to show you a short little video that we have made that kind of gives an overview.
that kinda gives an overview of our program. And you are our test audience. And we know that there are a few edits that we need to make. So, we will do that before we post it on our website to be public. But I think you'll get the gist of it right now.
Good morning, Mr. Martin. Welcome to Forsyth Academy.
Good morning, welcome to Forsyth Academy. We are a non-traditional program extension of the base high schools in Forsyth County. Students generally come to Forsyth Academy for two, three different reasons. One is they wanna accelerate and graduate early. If they have gotten behind and for various reasons, then they wanna catch up and get back on track to be able to graduate on time.
Students work at their own pace. And as they accelerate, we move from one class to another. And it's a great opportunity for those that do not fit into the traditional school setting.
The Forsyth Academy is a great school. Honestly, I love, I love attending it because it's 8 to 12 and you can get all your schoolwork done. And everything is fixed on how fast you are moving. Really, so honestly, your motivation is your success.
One of the questions that we get asked a lot here is why would a student choose to come to Forsyth Academy when we have such great base schools in this county? And the answer is kind of twofold. We've got two groups of kids who are drawn to Forsyth Academy. One group of kids comes from, they come for academic reasons. They come because maybe schools aren't going fast enough for them. They believe that they can get their work done quicker. We've proven that. Most of the kids who come to Forsyth Academy during the length of time graduate at least a semester early. If they come in their junior or sophomore year, they'll graduate a full year early most of the time. And so, we have that group of kids. And the other piece of that academic puzzle is kids who can't graduate on time if they stay at their base school. Maybe they're already math behind or they're already in English behind. And they can't catch up in a traditional setting. It gets overwhelming. If they fail one English, it's gonna be really tough to pass two of those. And so, they come here because they can do that in that order. So, we have those academic kids that come for academic reasons. And then we have another group of kids who come for social reasons. Maybe 2,500 kids is overwhelming. And one of the trends that we're seeing in education now is that anxiety is on the rise. And we're seeing lots more kids with anxiety kinda issues. And in a small environment, some of that anxiety goes away.
The academic model at Forsyth Academy is one of blended learning with flipped delivery. And by that, I mean without all of the curriculum on Apex or H-Learning, it's there waiting for the kids every quiz, every test, every note. It's there in a couple of different formats. It's audio, video, and traditional text. And everything is waiting for the students when they arrive. There's no waiting for the teacher to get everything ready. It's there waiting for them. My favorite part of the whole operation is the difference between us and the base school. At the base school, I would work the night before to get my lectures ready, to get my notes in hand. The next day, I would come there, have everything shined and polished, handouts ready, and I would have exactly what five students out of 25 needed. The others needed to go faster or slower. Here, the students control the pacing.
I achieve Virtual Academy is one of the academies that created the education under the umbrella of Forsyth County Schools. It is, in the same way that Forsyth Academy is a non-traditional high school completion opportunity, I achieve is also a non-traditional high school. I achieve is a school where students withdraw from their current school, either middle school or high school. We have a middle school and a high school program. They withdraw from their current school and enroll with I achieve. And when they do that, when they're an I achieve student and able to take advantage of all the opportunities that we have at I achieve. This year, we have greater than 200 students. The first time that we have reached that number. And we believe that this is a vision and a growth opportunity for the future. Not only in the academic environment, but in the whole technical skills and the technical communication. But we believe in really all aspects of our life.
We are here to support our students, to make sure that they receive the credits they need for graduation. We do wanna make sure that everyone knows, though, that we are just a program. And so, we support the base school. And so, once you graduate, you would walk, they walk with their base school.
I feel I'm more determined when I'm here than at my base school. Yeah, 'cause you're more focused, you don't have like outside things bothering you.
Now that Forsyth Academy is a program supporting the base schools in the district, our students have the opportunity, like Ms. Sumner said, to not only graduate from the base school, but also to participate in extracurricular activities throughout the school year. We have several students that attend Forsyth Academy either in the morning session or the afternoon session. And then they are also maybe enrolled for one or two classes at the base school. We have several students that play softball at the base school, football. We have some that are cheerleaders and some that are basketball players. And so, they're able not only to graduate with their base school, but also to participate throughout the school year.
There is no typical Forsyth County student. They come for social reasons, they come for academic reasons, and they come because they're happy to be here and we're happy to see them.
That is very good.
Thank you. It's hard to compete with those children.
Okay, what's next?
Did you start the slideshow?
I'm doing good to answer my cellphone, so I know none of this.
Do you close this one to give it to Forsyth? Was afraid to hit eggs. So, y'all have two sessions? Morning and afternoon.
There we go. Thank you very much. Thank y'all very much for your, we appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit with you about what we, what Betty and I have been involved with the last few months with Forsyth Academy. And then Susan will do a little bit with I achieve. But we really didn't know what to expect when we started a year and a half ago. As two retired or former high school principals, we really didn't know with a blended learning, with a virtual school, what the expectations for us would be or what our expectations for the students and teachers would be. And it's been an extremely good transition for both of us. And I'll have to say probably one of the most enjoyable things that I've done in 40-plus years in the school business. And I can see this as being the future for many kids as far as education down the road. And so, we just wanna share a few things with you. You know, obviously, when Forsyth Academy started, it was a charter school. And there were about 60 kids that started in it and they withdrew from Forsyth County Schools. They enrolled in Forsyth Academy. And that transition to a program extension, I think over the last few years, has been, has been a very good transition. And then in 2013, when that occurred, we were able to be able to, I think, effectively do more of taking care of the whole student and all the needs that they had, especially with elective classes, and being able to combine those two things. As you can tell here, we do all the mandated assessments. We do all the EOC tests. Kim Barnes, our ITS, is also our testing coordinator, and she does all of those things. And we're able to do the PSAT, SAT. This year, we started with adding AP courses. We had six of the eight teachers, and we'll give you that in just a minute, that did AP endorsement this past summer. So, that we could add AP courses, not only for Forsyth Academy, but also with I achieve and also with Gateway, so that those teachers can be facilitators there. And it says, who do we serve? Well, we take anybody, everybody, just about. And as you could tell from the video, kids come for a lot of different reasons, so...
What is the process to get in the program?
We have an application that we have online. And we have, it basically set up in two parts. The parents and the child fill out the first part. Then the base school counselors fill out the second half. And then we go through and we check students' attendance. What's their history been in the past? What's their academic achievement been in the past? If they have behavior issues, just a whole gamut. And then we rely a great deal on communicating with the base school. And, you know, what are their recommendations? Do they think that child can be successful in a blended learning or an alternate program like what we have? And then if all that fits, then we've, I have to say, we rarely turn a student down. I mean, it has to be something pretty significant for them not to be there.
Okay, the flexibility and the schedule in that we try to meet the needs because there are some students that need to stay at their base schools to pick up classes that we don't offer, especially when it comes to the career tech path that they might be involved in. Because we only have three of those. So, a student might have to come, go to their base school for first and second period, then come to us third and fourth, fifth and sixth. But we do meet those needs and provide that. And you ask about, we have, a traditional starting is 8 to 12, four classes in the morning, 12:30, 4:30, 4:00 in the afternoon. But sometimes that has to be switched depending on when a class would be offered at the base school. And if we find, for example, that they're struggling in math and we felt that their needs were met more, to stay at the base school, then we work with them on that. We talked about the applications. Applications are taken on a daily basis. Right now, we're at capacity with our enrollment and with our Apex seats. Apex, I think, for the county, the seats are full. So, we're in a holding pattern right now, but that does not mean we will not continue. And we date the applications as we get them. We, right now, what we'll look at most of all will be any senior that would not graduate in May. And we would, they would have top priority. A lot of the kids have personal things at home. They have sick family members, they have siblings they have to take care of. Some of their students have to actually work to support families. So, we have a very, very big range.
Last year, when Betty and I started in August, we had 45 students. And over the course of the year, the rolling enrollment, and basically what that means is, is that, you know, if a student finishes, then obviously they could quote graduate at that point in time, whether it be October or March or whatever it may be. So, we had a rolling enrollment last year of 192 students. That was our maximum that we had at any time during the year. And of those, we had 65 graduates. And then for last year, we had a staff, we had four full-time teachers, a Mass, Social Studies, and English. And if we did Spanish, then we had to bring someone in. If we did Health and PE, we had to bring someone in extra and so forth. So, thanks to you, we have been able to greatly change that this year and offer a lot of things for the students, which is why our enrollment, I think, has drastically jumped between last year and this year.
This year, the rolling enrollment, as of right now, is 299. Currently, we have 156 active students that we're serving on a daily basis. As of 1/14, we had 17 graduates. At this time last year, I think we had 12. We have about 50-something students that will be testing next week for an EOC and about 20 of those to 25, I can't remember the exact number, are econ students. With the eight full-time teachers, an IT person, full-time counselor, and we, for the first time, have a full-time special ed coordinator, which was a big plus for us because there are some students that can work on a consultative basis that are very successful with what we do and the individual attention that they can serve. In addition to these 299, we serve 102 I achieve students. So, and also Gateway students that they have a need. And we've been able to combine I achieve, Gateway, and Forsyth County to, our teachers work at both schools, or all three schools. Forsyth County, this is just one example of a student and what she has to say about coming to the academy and being successful so that she can graduate with her class. This next one is kind of one that we're hoping that we get there. The mother has terminal cancer and the little girl is really pushing, like, everything to try and get to the point where she can get that diploma before anything happens to her mother. We did, we sent six teachers last year for training. We have seven of eight that already had some AP endorsements. We currently have six classes that have been requested for AP. We have honors sections, we have honors English and Science. The main instructional delivery model is the Apex curriculum along with its learning. There are some courses that are not in Apex that the students, that the teachers have to develop completely through its learning. And if they have to have individual assignments or projects or activities, we try to hit every aspect of that. As of this past week, we have 485 credits that have been posted since August 2015. And I also said, six of the eight teachers work as facilitators for I achieve. And some of them serve the Gateway students that go there that might have an AP class or something like that. We don't have the curriculum at Gateway that they can still get through that. We did, even Gaddish worked very closely with us this year and we did get the NCAA approval. And we think that's going to be huge for the future.
So, what do we wanna do next? Well, obviously, we have visited, one thing we did was we visited another school system in the state who has a much larger program than what we do to see what they're doing in ways that we can improve and grow and so forth. So, some of the things we're looking at that we're just in conversation, obviously, expand the course offerings for AP and elective courses. We have, this year, with the addition of the teachers, we have, one of our English teachers also has ESOL endorsement and also has Spanish certification. So, we're able to do all levels of Spanish in-house now rather than having to do it outside of the school day. Because last year, we had to do it at night from 4:30 to 6:30. And so, now we can do it in-house. So, if a student is taking, for example, Spanish with us and they finish the course in the middle of a semester, they can go right into the next level of Spanish. And the same thing with any course. That's one of the great things. And it's remarkable when that light comes on for kids at different times. And this may sound a little strange coming from someone who was at a base high school for a long, long time. One of the most remarkable things to me that we have the ability to do is take that child when that light does come on and let them move at a pace where they can see success rather than having to sit in a chair for 180 days to get credit for a course. And for the kids, and obviously with, you know, right now, 250-something kids in the building and there are, you know, almost 15,000 high school students, it's not necessary for everybody. But those 65 kids last year and those 17 this year, I'm a firm believer would not have graduated and walked across that stage if you had not made a commitment to give them an alternate way to get their high school diploma. And that is significant in this day and time. And I just think it's just gonna continue to grow. We'll see more and more places where kids are wanting, and we get parents, they call us just about every day, wanting information about it because they see a need for their individual child to have a different way to get a high school diploma than the traditional way that we all know has been around since the 1800s. We basically do high school today like it was when it started in the 1800s. And so, to be able to do this to us is exciting and it's kinda neat to see what might be next. So, obviously, we wanna expand AP offerings. We wanna be able to offer any AP course that any child would want to take. There's bound to be a way for us to do that. So, we just have to work on that. Work-based learning, internships, dual enrollment, those are the kind of things, if we could get a student an internship with a business here in town where they could learn a skill and at the same time, get their high school diploma, now you're being able to work on them with building a workforce right here in the county. And of course, the school system is where we would like to start. You know, would be a great thing to be able to do to get some of those things done. Obviously, communication is huge. We work constantly on trying to communicate better with the base schools. And that's not a, we haven't perfected that. But that's a daily thing that we work on to make sure that they understand what we do and how we do, and we understand better the needs that they have. Because we're still an extension of the base high school. Our job is to take that 10% that are not graduating and find a way for them to graduate. So, at some point in time down the road, Dr. Bearden can go to Atlanta when we have 100% of our kids. That'd be a nice recognition to be able to get that the school system has 100% of the kids graduating. So, we see our job is taking the 10% that don't and finding a way for them to be able to graduate. We've had a lot of conversation about grades 6 through 8. And we've had a lot of parents who have called us wanting to know if we would offer... wanting to know if we would offer an opportunity for their middle schoolers to do what the high schoolers do. So that's a conversation, now that's, that's a, that will be a different duck. It will quack differently than what the high school does. And so that's something that we're going to put a lot of time and work into. But do we think it would fill up? Yes. I think if we offered a middle school program, I think you'd be amazed at the number of middle school parents who would take advantage of that, so. And then the whole thing of personalized learning, you know, what does that look like? Well, obviously, that's something that's going to grow, and that's, Susan's the expert on that, so she's next.
I want to tell you a quick story. I had a guy call me at the beginning of the year, and he, his daughter had been in this program, and his nephew needed to get in, and, you know, he hadn't been answered the next day, so he was impatient. "I can't get him in." So I just sent an email and said, you know, "This kid, I didn't really do anything." And anyway, I was shopping Christmas, and I ran into the nephew. And he came up to me, and he's like, "Thank you so much for getting me in, I'm doing so well." And I saw, I didn't say, I just said, "You're welcome." Sorry, I didn't give you all the credit. But I just wanted you to know that he was, he was, he said, "I'm doing so much better." And, you know, they have time to work with me on some things I didn't understand. And he was, it was just great to hear the kid talk about it, you know, and talk about how grateful he was to be in the program.
Well, then, it's remarkable, we, this year, we had a young man graduate who was actually a sixth-year senior. And to me, that was as exciting as anything for him to find, and a week later, we had a young lady graduate who was six, just turned sixteen, and she graduated a year and a half early. So you can take care of the extremes of both ends. I won't say extreme, I'm talking, that's not the best word to use. But you can take care of whatever their individual need is, just like whatever they need.
We get, I like a lot of questions on the academy, so I find this overview very helpful.
Good, good. Well, I achieve is also a non-traditional high school, but there, but it is different from Forsyth Academy. And when we showed the video a little bit earlier, one of the things that we want to adjust in the video is to have all the Forsyth Academy information together, and then all the I achieve information together. Because it is a little bit confusing for families who call and ask questions of me about the academy and vice versa. So we just want to be a little more direct about exactly what each school offers. I achieve is a school. Our students withdraw from their current middle or high school and enroll in I achieve. And we're fully accredited, certified, just like any other middle or high school in Forsyth County. We began in 2010, and over those years, we've served greater than twelve hundred students. And we use its learning. Our curriculum and instruction is delivered through teacher-created modules in its learning and follow right along, our teachers are teachers in Forsyth County schools. And so the curriculum follows right along with the base schools in biology, or in eighth-grade math, any course that they're in. And we believe that that is a bonus and a value because it is a Forsyth County instructor, Forsyth County curriculum, same standards as any other schools in our district. We also, of course, have the state mandated assessments, and that's really the only time that our students are required to come in for face-to-face interaction with us, is when they have to take one of these state mandated assessments, or one of the college board assessments, or the ACT. So that's an interesting thing, when we get all the way to the EOG and meet the students in person that I actually know because of talking to their parents on the phone, or communicating with the students by email. But again, we think that's all the wave of the future. So we have the PSAT, I see, all those things are available to our students. We do follow the school calendar in two semesters. This is another difference between us and the academy. Our students have a great deal of flexibility, but not within completing the courses. The flexibility is really within the assignments that the teachers offer them. So the teachers post their assignments in units of a week or two at a time. And so when the student sees the assignment, they see everything that's due for that assignment. Do this activity, this test, communicate with one of your peers, upload this, make a video, do a science project, whatever. Take these assessments and do all of that by midnight Saturday night. So within that assignment time, the students can do whatever suits their schedule. I always tell the parents that, and then I say, "But I need the parents' help to help the students set their schedule," because they're kids. And they go, "Oh, I don't have to do that till Saturday night at midnight, I've got plenty of time." So I want the parents, and I always tell the parents, that it needs to work with your family structure. If your student works better in the afternoon, and you want the student to sleep late in the morning and then get up and work, that's fine. Or if the student needs to get up in the morning and do her work because she goes to gymnastics in the afternoon. So within the assignment time, the students have a lot of flexibility. But they do earn their credits a semester at a time, just like in the buildings. We have applications processed throughout the year. Although I do close the application process as we get on into the semester, just so that it's not too hard for the student to make that adjustment, or that they haven't gotten too far behind in a course, that it would be too hard to climb out of it if they had to make that adjustment. When we assumed this responsibility in 2014, 15, we had eighty-seven students. And today, the enrollment is not two hundred and fifty-one. It was the day I wrote this, but we've had some adjustments in with students leaving after the semester and going back to their base schools because they completed whatever they needed to do. So we have more than two hundred, we have about two hundred and ten right today. And so that's about greater than two hundred percent growth in eighteen months. I thought that was pretty amazing when I started thinking about it that way. The teachers and counselors are Forsyth County employees who work in their base schools, and then they have accepted the I achieve responsibility beyond their base school day. So they are available, not often in real time for the students either in real time, email time, or on the phone, except for the Forsyth Academy instructors, that this year, that has enabled us to have some daytime, real time, face-to-face time with the teachers, and that is a huge good thing, that's better. And there will be more and more demand for that. So the blended model seems to be emerging as the most desirable, and probably as the most accessible, successful for the success of the students. So we'll work on that a little bit in the future. And then we have the shared staff that Rudy and Betty mentioned a while ago, that is new for us with I achieve. In the middle school, our students take the academic core, ELA, math, science, and social studies. All of our middle schools are, teachers are gifted indoors, so we offer that option for students who need that. And that's good, the differentiation and the personalized education. And the high school academic courses, we have everything they need for graduation. I always tell the parents or the students, so we don't have every course that every high school offers, but we have every course that they need for graduation. And then we also do have AP courses, and we have had those for a number of years, but that is a growing, growing, growing base of our population. And so we have also enriched that with using the Forsyth Academy instructors as our, some of our AP teachers for I achieve. And then we have CTA, completer pathways available, and NCAA, that's a biggie. I had a phone call the other day from some, like Oklahoma, some person who wanted an online course for her son, and it needed to be NCAA-approved. So I could say that it was, she didn't want him, she didn't sign up, but that's interesting. This is a comment from one of our students, a middle school student, who is a competitive gymnast. And just as we were talking about a while ago, many of the gymnasts, the practice schedule requires the gymnast to be twenty-three hours a week in the gym. And so, and it often starts at like one-thirty in the afternoon. We also have dancers, we have actors, we have athletes. We have one boy who's just started with us, he's an internationally-ranked fly fisherman. I thought, how do you get to be that? Wow, that is pretty cool. So this is one of our middle schools, and then a parent who offered her opportunity, her comments about her students. And her particular students had been homeschooled for a number of years, so they were familiar with the sort of flexibility of the schedule, but she was pleased with the opportunities of the structure of Forsyth County schools. So I think there's more that we could say, but have you had any questions?
Yeah, I think it's just phenomenal that this all started in 2005, and it was Paul Godstir to do this Forsyth Academy, that was her thing. And for those of you that have been around and know that that was her passion. But I think if she were here today to see what the three of you have done, and what you've taken it to, she would just be in tears, because this is what it was all about, that personalized learning. And you can just see, I'm sitting here thinking as a member, what we've got to address, and that is how do we grow this program, and it's facility-wise, because obviously, it is coming.
It is coming.
Even, I think, South is getting some of that blended model, but you're both, I mean, all three of you are so wide. This is what, what it's all about in the future, and we couldn't have had three better people than the three with your experience to do this.
Well, thank you very much.
And really, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
It was really good to see how it changed over the years, too. We've been watching it ever since I've been on the board and it started, and we were really intrigued with, like Rudy said, the graduates that are coming out of here wouldn't have normally graduated in a lot of cases. And those graduates walking the stage, telling their story, they moved us. And so we know this was important, and we're trying to figure out how to change it. And I can see the change through the presentation, so I thank you for that.
And so it being a charter, not being a charter school, and just being a base school program, that's working well?
Very well.
Good. Thank you for the information, that was great. Okay, I've lost my place. Okay, next we have Debbie Smith with the suicide prevention policy.
Good evening. All right, on July first, two thousand and fifteen, House Bill one ninety-eight became law. House Bill one ninety-eight is modeled after the Jason Flatt Act. And Jason Flatt was a student who committed suicide in New Jersey. His father began the Jason Flatt Foundation to inform and educate everyone about the dangers of suicide and to hopefully shed some light on preventive measures. So the law requires that all public school certified personnel are trained annually on suicide prevention, not only prevention, but intervention and postvention. So the difference for us was, we had preventive measures and we had intervention measures, but we've added some post-vention measures. So we're going to share some of that with you tonight. Before I do, excuse me. Sorry, I'm not used to this mouse. I want to present to you our, members of our leadership team for Student Support Services, because they have been instrumental in being trained and putting this presentation together for all of our certified staff. So I'd like to introduce from South Forsyth High School, the lead counselor, Dr. Jamie Brown. You can stand up, Jamie. From Riverwatch Middle School, our counselor rep, Dawn Denzmore. By the way, is the mother of Peyton Denzmore, who presented for Kelly Miltonite.
That's your new claim to fame.
That's right. She's a cutie. The lead social worker from Forsyth County, Gail Foin. And our lead social, other lead social worker, we've gotten so big, we've had to share those duties, Nicole Lee. And then our prevention specialist, Lindsay Simpson. And then our elementary council representative from Vincre Creek Elementary, Shay Wortman. These very industrious folks, and on top of all of their other jobs, attended a training in Macon in, I think it was late September, and took back the information from that training, and they have put together a model to train our counselors in-depth on suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. That took place on January fourth. And then they have developed a video clip that will be used in training for all of our certified personnel. And at the end of this PowerPoint, I've included a link so that you can see that. And I really just love how they've included the children in that video clip. So it just, the suicidal ideation procedures is to assess the level of risk, complete an emergency conference notification form and contact parents, and then follow up if emergency contact, or conference notification forms, to make sure they return, to make sure the parents have sought help for the children. And then once the children return to school, we want to follow up with them at thirty days and at ninety days to make sure that any accommodations that have been put in place for them, or any healthcare plan that has been put into place, A, has been followed, and B, has been successful. And to make sure all of the adults in the school that come in touch with those students are aware of the dangers, and making sure we're keeping a close eye on things in case other backup information or other resources are needed to help them. So that's it in a nutshell. I will say that Jamie is working closely with Northview High School in Fulton County, who has had some issues in the past with suicide several years ago, and they have some good programs. So we're going to be working with them and hopefully expand this and get some additional programs in our schools. Y'all have any questions?
How big a problem is it, Debbie?
It's, it's more so than we want to admit. More in the high school and the middle school, of course, than elementary. Last year, I believe we had three or four incidents at North Forsyth High School. One was a suicide, and then the others were attempts. We are seeing across the board increased anxiety in our students, and we are seeing just a lot of mental illness, and so we're doing a lot of training. We're actually bringing in some of the counselors from our community. Heather Hayes and Denise Houston did some training with our staff on, you know, what to look for, some resources to go to, what to do. And then the other piece of that is informing our parents. And that's the bad part of suicide, is that people don't like to talk about it. It's fearful, and so we want to take that stigma away, and especially for our teachers, and help them to be able to talk to parents when they see warning signs.
What gets me, when you look at the students now, and they're so smart, it's just a different world because they're surrounded all the time by connections with other people, and they never have time to be with themselves or be unto themselves.
Exactly.
And I think that, just as the drug council has been started and making that aware, awareness there, and making parents, giving them an opportunity to speak out and to work together, that suicide is probably something else that, as a community, we need to address. The change in our communities, of the stress that is put on these students, and the educational achievement that is a lot of times what the parents want them to do. I don't know how, what the next step is, but I just feel like maybe, you all are laying the groundwork, that there's just something that maybe is a board or something we could do to bring more awareness of this out in the community, because the schools have got to have support. We can't do, the teachers can't be responsible for everything that goes on.
One of the things that we're trying to do as a proactive measure is to implement social emotional learning standards in the elementary and middle school, and use some various programs, whether that be Seven Mindsets, or The Leader in Me, or whatever we can find to help kids look at the bright side of things, help them to be accountable, help them to make good choices and sound decisions. And I think the thing that's been the aha for me is the new brain research that says that children's frontal lobe does not really mature until they're twenty-five years old. And so they really do need help and guidance and support, all the way from kindergarten, all the way through graduation. So I think that's important.
And I think part of the recognition we made tonight with drug awareness, and it's in the same category
It is.
A stigma that we're trying to release that veil and trying to get it in the community. I know the work with you and Lindsay and the counselors and social workers. You know, it's important that we get this out there and understand it, and make sure the parents, homes understand it as well.
Exactly.
They see the signs and understand it.
Yes, so.
So it's important.
It is.
As a parent, too, because I would like to know what the warning signs are and things like that. Because since you're seeing the kid every day, you might not see something progress, so you might not notice or know what to look for, so it would be interesting to learn more about it.
We always tell parents, and if y'all want to add anything, please do, but we always tell parents that, you know, talk to your children, keep those lines of communication open. Don't let them answer you with a yes or no. Have sound conversations, and do family things together, be a family, and, you know, take time together, and put the devices down, and spend some quality time together, so. Okay.
Thank you, Debbie, you're next. One more. With the updated promotion and retention policy.
I'm actually going to ask Beth Kiefer to come up and join me, because this was a collaborative effort, so. Okay. Teaching and learning and Student Support Services, Fonda and Carl, and Beth and I worked carefully as we rolled out the Georgia milestones. The state of Georgia has re-implemented their promotion-retention policy. So I'll let Beth tell you a little bit about that.
As you know, it was waived last year, pardon my voice, it's coming back slowly. It was, it was re-implemented like Debbie indicated. Last year, it was waived because of the new test. This year, it is put back out, the promotion-retention placement law that the state has. So we have to create a policy or a procedure based on the state law. We've done that, we have done that. We have to base it on the state's mandate that if a student does not pass reading in grades three, five, and eight, they're automatically retained. And if they don't pass math in grades five and eight, they're automatically retained. So we've couched that into the promotion placement retention procedures for Forsyth County, and the draft is to follow.
Yes. So because we're a strategic waiver school system, we can be flexible, and we actually developed a draft, which I'll tell you was not much different than what we did last year, because we liked that. So, but this draft was actually shared with our lack, principal lack team members, so that they could take it back to the principals, get their feedback, and make sure that they were in agreement with it. So I will read all of this to you, but basically it follows the data team and RTI process we already have in place, where teachers look at their data and make sure that students are meeting standards. If they're not, they implement interventions, and they monitor their progress, and seeing if they make gains. And then if not, then they actually notify the parents, typically by the end of February, that there is a possibility that there might be, we might need to revisit that grade level. And then they can continue to monitor the progress, and then in the spring, late spring, they'll have a conference with the parent, with an administrator, and make a decision whether or not the child needs to be retained or placed in the next grade. The reason that this is important is, to me, because, and I think Beth would agree, is that students can take a test on any given day, and all of their formative assessments and other assessments along the way may show that they know the content, but they may not pass that test on that given day. So we feel like they need a plethora of information before they make a decision. That, on top of, John Hattie is an educational guru, and retention is one of the lowest forms of help for kids, according to him. So we want to make sure that we're being proactive about that, too. So.
We do want to spread the word that if a student does not pass at the third grade, fifth grade, or eighth grade level, reading or math, that they have the opportunity to retest. If they retest and pass, they're automatically promoted. If they don't pass the retest, then they'll be pushed to the committee, where they'll look at the totality of evidence and make the best decision for the student.
Okay. Any questions?
I just wanted to add, we have such an outstanding team of counselors and social workers in our school system. We're just very, very thankful and very proud and appreciate everything you guys do for our kids every day. It's an awesome team.
Thank you. They're amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is going to sit on the table, these two classes?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're on to the financial report with Mr. Rick Gunn.
Good evening.
Good.
Most exciting part.
Right.
First of all.
Everybody's sleeping.
I'm sorry.
Everybody's sleeping.
Mr. Gunn might need some counseling after this.
Yeah.
This has been a fun meeting, let me tell you. First of all, I'm going to go over the December financials, and then I have some gentlemen that will come up and speak with you about the bond issue that we did yesterday. First, for the month of December, we began the month with 116.7 million in our general fund bank account. Receipts for the month were 24,149,000, and the specimens were 29,100,000, leaving us a cash balance of 111,841,000. Reason that's higher than usual is our tax revenue, the bulk of it has come in for the year from what we had budgeted for. Next item is our budget for the month. Revenues, you can see that we are at 70% for the year, and expenditures for each functional area, you can see where they're at for the year, instruction being our largest area, 50.8%. Overall, we're at 51.29%, so we're right in line with being six months through the year. If you were to look at the revenue table, you can see the first item, ad valorem taxes, we are at 92.6%, so we've collected the bulk of that for the year. Our other taxes, intangible, real estate and title ad valorem, we're above where we should be for the six-month period. You have a listing of all the checks that were issued during the month of December. Total checks and wires issued were 16.193 million. All the schools reported for the month of December, the total for all the schools summed with 7,480,000 in their cash accounts. The monthly debt service analysis is here, showing our debt service account within any balance of 16.7 million, while the SPOSS accounts have 41.7 million. The monthly investment summary, it shows under Fund 307, 8.1 million being transferred out. That goes to capital projects to pay for the 2014 bond projects, and another 741,000 that's being transferred from SPOSS to pay debt service billings, and also another 425,000 from our existing 2007 bond that went to fund local projects. And then we have our SPOSS 4 comparison. For the month of December, we collected 2.9 million, which was 111,000 more than the previous month, and we're at 9.72% change from where it was last year at this time. So those are the basic financial statements for the month of December. Any questions on those? Okay, well now, I'm going to bring up, I have a couple of gentlemen from City come up and talk with you about the bond issue that we did yesterday. I have Mr. Bryce Holcomb and Brian Cenney.
So this is under the action items bond resolution?
No, I have that, that will be after this.
That's after that, okay.
And I have someone else that will be doing that, so I'll let them talk about that.
Handout that I'll hand out to you, if I may, and I'll try to be brief, I know you all are tired. We did have an excellent day selling the bonds yesterday, and we wanted to kind of give the board some idea of what all happened and why it happened.
We've had the pleasure of representing you as your bond underwriter over the last three years, and my colleague, Brian Cenney and I have worked really closely with your staff on bond ratings and three bond issues. The first one was refunding back in '13, and then when you passed, you know, the $200 million bond referendum, the new money, we handled the '14 issue and borrowed basically half the money then, and recommended, and you accepted our recommendation, to hold off on the rest, and, you know, come back really when you needed the money. And the reason for that is, is that rates have been extremely low for the last three years, but what happens is, when you borrow the money, you can't really reinvest it at the same rate that you borrowed it at, because short-term rates, the Federal Reserve has reduced rates so much, as we are well aware, the reinvestment rates are quite a bit less than your borrowing rate. And so we call that negative arbitrage, and the negative arbitrage is extremely expensive. So what we said is, okay, borrow what you think you need, use it, and then let us know when you need more. So Rick came to us probably the middle of November of last year, and said, hey, we're ready to borrow the remainder of the funds that were approved. And so we said, okay, well, we think you'll be better off waiting until the first of the year, right after the first of the year, because what oftentimes happens in our marketplace is, you have a mad rush of bonds at the end of the year, which tends to drive rates up some in our market, and then at the beginning of the year, you will have limited supply and a lot of funds available, and rates will go down. Well, that kind of happened in Moore this year. We, as you know, the Fed actually raised rates at the very end of last year, and then what happened is, the yield curve was sloped about like this, and it really flattened out. So the short-term rates went up a little bit, and the mid, the long-term rates went down. And so if you look at, look at page one of this handout that I gave you, if you look at the lower graph over on page one, we graph out over the last 30 years, the percentage of time when rates have been lower. And what you'll see is, in those early years, say, one through five, nothing to be real excited about. But you get out, you know, the years seven through 17, you're dealing with rates have only been lower 1% of the time. So just a wonderful time to be marketing and selling bonds in the marketplace. And then lo and behold, as luck would have it, and it really is kind of lucky, yesterday the stock market was down over 500 points, which doesn't sound very lucky, I know, but what happens is, when that much, when you have that much of a bad market, really equity market, you have a, have a, what we call, like a flight to quality, where money's leading the stock market and going in high-rated bonds like yours. And so what happened was, the US Treasury rates yesterday went down seven to eight basis points. In our marketplace, they were reduced by like three to four basis points. So we went in the market and marketed your bonds, and y'all sold a little over 100 million, almost 101 million dollars in what we call par amount, and that's the face amount of bond. We ended up with over $650 million in orders for your bonds. You have an excellent name in the marketplace. I know you've heard me say that before. You're very highly rated. Your ratings are AA1 by Moody's, AA+ by Standard &amp; Poor's. Those are your standalone ratings. Those are some of the highest in the state. Moody's, matter of fact, whenever you, you know, go to market, you have to get re-rated, and Moody's has made it clear that the fact that the board, well, Florida Department agreed with this as well, the fact that the board had the foresight, you know, to raise its millage rate last year, one mil, was very important. They recognize that, and I think that the fact that you guys are now rebuilding reserves, if you continue to rebuild reserves, Moody's has made it pretty clear that you're probably going to be bumped up to the highest rating you can get, which is AAA. So I think that's on the horizon, if you continue to manage the system the way you managed it, and to grow your reserves as you did this year. So look at page number two, and all we really did here was, Brian and I just wanted to graph out for you the, you know, the three bond issues we've worked on with you. I think you'll see that each of those issues, you were really fortunate as to when you borrowed, because rates were relatively low each time, and then go to the next page with me, if you would, and I would ask you to kind of look at the middle of the page. Our marketplace, when we price a bond, we price bonds off a scale of rates called the municipal market data curve, and that's what we call the benchmark curve that we use. And the MMD, as it's known in our world, is the high-grade curve. So that's the curve that the state of Georgia, which is AAA, should price at or near. Your bonds, we started out yesterday in the marketplace, if you look under the heading "initial pricing," really the spreads that we list by maturity, these were those spreads, and they range from five to 20 basis points above MMD. As I mentioned earlier, you had $650 million order, or really orders, for $101 million in bonds, so you were six and a half, really, times oversubscribed. So what we ended up doing is, we went in and lowered your yields by the yields that you can notice here on the little bit further right, basically lowered your yields by really five to, well, really, seven to 11 basis points throughout the curve. And what that ended up doing is giving you $700,000 extra at the closing. And so that worked out extremely well. So a lot of that was luck. We think we did a real nice job marketing your bonds, but y'all have a wonderful name in the marketplace, and that's as a result of your good management and your good stewardship. The next page, I would just want to point out, what we ended up doing is, you basically had $101 million left to sell. We sold that amount, and because rates are so low right now, investors were willing to pay you a premium on those bonds. And so you ended up getting 107 cents on the dollar on the short end of the yield curve, out to 128 really cents on the dollar in the middle. What that resulted in was a premium equal to over $23 million. So what that means to you is that instead of, at the closing, having $101 million to build new schools with, you're going to get 121 billion dollars really to build new schools with. So that's just phenomenal. And again, you know, the premium speaks volumes, but that's all driven by the very low, low yields, the yields that you got on the bonds. The last thing I would just merely point out is on the last page, which is page number four, or rather, five, and these are the three bonds we've worked on with you. You know, the 13 bonds were a refunding. With that issue, we saved over 20, you know, $5 million on that refunding. We worked real hard on that, that one along with your staff. The 14 bonds that were sold about a year and a half ago, probably was the most aggressive pricing, and really the spreads were the lowest to MMD. And then this issue is clearly the lowest overall borrowing cost, had it, you know, two and a half really percent. So we worked out really well, and we think the strategy to bifurcate your bonds has worked out really well, because the initial borrowing you locked in, and all-in borrowing rate of a 288, and now you've locked in a rate of a two and a half. And that's it. That's all I've got, and I appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Brian, for making it so where we could understand it.
You're most welcome. Thank you.
And I honestly, I know that the staff does a phenomenal job, that you've been right on it and hitting it this right day and.
Thank you.
Keeping up with that. It's very much appreciated, and we were just always, we never have enough money to build here.
Right.
To have that extra $20 million.
Yeah.
Are you better going home?
Well, it worked out really well, and I want to brag on your staff here. Rick did a beautiful job. He was a pleasure to work with, as he was last time, and really the time before that, and just a great staff here. As you already know, Jeff is awesome, and just a great management team, as y'all already know, and I mean, y'all are a great board. So you, as I've said several times, just always very well-received in the marketplace. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodness.
So what property do you own? Is the $20 million?
Well, the next item is an action item, and Ken Pollak from Denton's will come up and present to you a bond resolution to authorize the issuance of the bonds that were sold yesterday. Ken?
It's good to be here again. I was, I think, last year for the 2014 bond issue, and this is now the second part. I have to say, I have Bryce beat. I've been working on y'all's bond issues since 1997. So I think there's at least maybe eight or nine of those. So, and I think, I know some of you were on the board back then. I think both Nancy and Ann.
Nancy was.
Oh, a little later, okay. But anyway, I am serving as your bond counsel and your disclosure counsel for this bond issue. And so what I am presenting to you tonight is the bond resolution, which I think Rick forwarded a copy of it to everybody. I hope everybody has it. But this is the action that will formally and legally authorize the issuance of the bonds. And this resolution really does, I think, three things. First of all, it, like I said, authorizes the issuance of 100 million, 830, $100 million, 830,000 in aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, which is the remaining authorization from the bond referendum that was held in 2014 for 195 million. And then it authorizes the form of the bond, and establishes all of the terms of the bond, including the interest rates, the maturity dates, and everything really that Bryce just went over, which is all the pricing information for the bonds. Secondly, it recommends, and the recommendation is a legal term that's used in Georgia law, that recommends to the county board of commissioners that the county, on behalf of the school board, levy the tax, the ad valorem tax to re- board, levy the tax, the ad valorem tax to repay the bonds. So the county board of commissioners is set to do that on February 4th at their next meeting. But this resolution formally requests or recommends that they make that tax levy. And then third, the resolution authorizes the school district to enter into a bond purchase agreement with Citigroup, which is Bryce's firm, which will, which is the underwriter for the bonds, will be purchasing the bonds and reselling them, the bonds to the market as Bryce has described. So those are the three primary actions that are taken by this bond resolution. If, before you are ready to adopt it, I'm glad to answer any questions from the legal side, if you have any. Otherwise, you can make a motion and take action to adopt.
I'd recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Tom, and a second by Nancy. Do we have any questions? Okay. On favor? Unanimous.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our board goals that we discussed at our retreat. I'm assuming everybody's read over them. Is there anything that we want to change? Do they look like what we talked about? Everybody's good with that? Do I have a motion to approve the board goals? So moved. Second. A motion by Nancy, and a second by Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And then we have points of information. Dr. Bearden, do you have?
Just one item. Tom Winning cannot be here tonight, but included in the board packet is the construction update. He'll return next month to make that presentation in front of all of you, but wanted to make sure he had a chance to review that. Everything's progressing. Bill, any additional information? I mean, everything seems to still be, I know the weather's not helping us recently, but things are still moving forward.
Frank, for no ringer.
That poll is not going to come through.
I'm thinking that's not going to happen.
Maybe next week, right? That's all I have.
Okay. We have an executive session with the personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, and a second by Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous.